Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started with Commissioners Court. A notice is hereby given that a regular meeting of the above-named Commissioners Court is being held today on the 27th, starting at 1:04 PM via telephonic video conference, which time the court will deliberate or take action on the emergency or public necessity involving the COVID-19 Presidential State and Leno Emergency Declarations, and specifically the following subjects will be discussed that we'll get down into the agenda. Due to emergency measures that are currently in place, all public comments shall be limited to one minute and need not be specific to the agenda item. We still have rules of decorum, and the rules will be enforced. Persons who wish to address this court or to have completed an agenda request form, and we've got the website, and they were due by 11:00 AM this morning. Jennifer, I don't know if we have any public comments. Can you advise? And I can't.
As of right now, there, I have not received any.
I apologize to everyone. We're still trying to get this new technology way down. We're trying to do it so that everybody that wants to can log in and watch. So we're having some, experiencing some technical challenges. Do we have any public comments?
No.
No, I didn't. I think you're muted.
Yeah, I can see that.
Okay.
As of right now, there are no comments that have been submitted. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Okay, thank you. If we would, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would. Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, to your honor.
One nation under God, one and indivi-
Honor of Texas flag, Pledge of Allegiance. One nation under God, one and indiv-
We'll go ahead and get started with Commissioners Court. Start with Agenda Item Number Two. You want to have any comments on the consent agenda?
He, uh-
Oh, I'm sorry. Good. For clarity, we're going to go ahead and call roll, ensure that everyone understands the full forum. Commissioner Jones?
Yes. Commissioner Peter Jones, here. Precinct One.
Commissioner Rosky?
Yes. Precinct Two, here.
Commissioner Sandoval?
Precinct Three, here, sir.
And Commissioner Moss?
Precinct Four, Gary Don Moss, I'm here.
Thank you. All members are present. We are in the district courtroom of the courthouse. We are all practicing social distancing. Now we'll move to Agenda Item Two, the consent agenda.
Judge, the only comment I have on the item to do with Lano County Child Welfare Board contract between Lano County is there's a typo in there. They talk about $4,400 as provided on the full year 2014 budget. Is that correct, or is that?
It's the same dollar amount.
Same dollar amount.
Okay. So that's when it was just said, okay. My case I'd move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
My second.
But a motion by Commissioner Moss, a second by Commissioner Rosky. Any further discussion?
Commissioner Jones.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Jones.
Yeah.
Second by Commissioner Rosky. Any further discussion? Being known all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda Item Three, public comment. Agenda Item Four is update discussion on Lano County emergency response, including Lano County Emergency Declaration and report on information received from the Office of the Governor and TM and Lano County Local Health Authority. We can start with on Dr. Franklin. Jennifer's going to have to unmute you. You should be unmuted now, Jack.
Perfect. Yes. The report is, we are staying about the same here in Lano County. We still have the same three cases. All three cases in Lano County have been listed as recovered by our region, Region Seven. I don't think we should take that as a we're in the clear, we haven't had any cases in four weeks because of reports we're getting from surrounding counties. Several new cases have been reported over the weekend in Burnett County as well as in Mason County. I think it's simply a matter of time before we do get a few more cases. Our hospital is, the hospital, Bakersfield White on 71, is not overwhelmed at this point, and we seem to be holding our own very well. Statewide cases have leveled out. We're getting about between 600 and 900 cases daily, so not seeing an increase in peak. I think we're, we are staying stable at this point.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Franklin?
A little feedback, if I may. Peter Jones. We had a, we have a testing in Lano County tomorrow. I did get some feedback from lawyers who have tried to get involved in that. The first effort that they made, I directed to Gillespie County, and the feedback I got was that they, the people running the, one, the testing tomorrow, did not get, they don't get information until 24 hours ahead of time, so they have to call back to reschedule to be in the testing tomorrow instead of Gillespie County. And then, that's one point. And the other point was that they made is that they would test only one person and a family, assuming that if one tested a particular way, then the rest of them are the same. So I, that wasn't something that they were aware of, nor I was, when we announced the testing tomorrow.
Just for clarification, the testing that started began last week. It started on Fri-, on Friday. The Texas Military Department and the Department of State Health notified all of the counties that were involved in this on Thursday, to the point that the Mills County judge found out on the conference call the same time that we did, that the testing was going to be happening in his county within 24 hours. Did the testing in Fredericksburg, we don't have any information whatsoever on the testing. We don't have any information whatsoever on the control mechanisms, on who gets tested, how they test, when the responses are made, or anything. This is all done up at a state level. The thing that we did was, was I went over to Mills County and looked at their operation. On Saturday, both Gilbert and I went over to Burnett County and looked at their operation. I know that on Saturday, Burnett County had 50, they conducted 50 tests, but we don't know, and I don't think even Burnett County knows, or Dr. Franklin knows, who, who was tested and who was not tested, if it was family members, if it was not family members. That's all going to be stuff that is being, I guess, controlled and monitored and administered by the, by the state of Texas and by the Texas military. I don't know if that helps, helps your comment.
I just, I'm just giving feedback of those who attempted to get on the free, on the testing tomorrow in Lano County. That's their feedback, so that we have a little more experience. The other issue I wanted to just bring up and feedback I've got is a confusion among constituents about what do we do with the governor's order? Because it's quite, when you read it through, there's a lot of history and whereas's and, you know, et cetera, et cetera, and it's not clear to folks, and I've had a few, what do we do? I'm not sure, is it stay home or not stay home, or what? So the, the, the governor's order is adding confusion, frankly, to some folks in trying to understand clarity on it. So if there's an opportunity for that to be made more clear, more directive, I think that would be helpful.
On Friday, we had a conference call, I'll say "we" like it was an informal deal, but there was probably 700 people on the call with Governor Abbott, and the only thing that, that the county judges and mayors that were on that call could, could basically confirm was that the governor was coming out with something new today. And it was, and our hopes were that the governor would come out with this information at, on today at lunch, and we could have Commissioners Court and provide some clarification on it. This morning, we came in and found out that they had pushed the governor's announcement to 2:30. But we still don't know anything. That, that was probably the biggest driving force on why we let our order expire, is because there would be even more confusion on that right now. So right now, I don't, I don't know if we can give you or the constituents that called you any more clarification than what, what's out there right now. There's, it's a moving target.
I basically directed them to the order, but the order, when you read it through, doesn't, doesn't make it quite clear about what they should actually be doing, so.
Well, and at the end of the day, it's, it's going to be social discipline also. It's going to be up to the individuals practicing that social discipline.
Right.
Gilbert, did you want to give an update on, on what you've got as far as testing for tomorrow and everything, and you'll have to unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I'm planning right now, the military's showing up at 10 o'clock. Is there a start time for the testing? They plan to be here around 8 o'clock. We'll set up, right now, I'm trying to get approval to do a tent, because our tent fell through, so I'm getting, kind of running that. If I can get Cindy to give me a call real quick, that would help, but that's kind of-
You, you got it. We, we talked about it.
You know, because the, the tent needs to get here, and they could set it up today, and I already have approval to get that done. Anyway, that's the only challenge we really have right now, but the testing seems to be going along. There is some challenges with the scheduling. I know they have had those problems. I think they've worked through the bugs on those, trying to schedule the appointments every 15 minutes, so there shouldn't be a line in the crowd of cars that show up for the testing. What we witnessed in Burnett County is it is pretty well-run, you know, and the military comes in, they're pretty self-sufficient. They have all the equipment they need, they just need our support. So that's what we plan to do for them.
Okay. Thank you, Gilbert. Does anyone have questions for Gilbert?
Yes.
Thank you. And we, we got your tent taken care of, Gilbert. I'll call you after. So we'll move on to Agenda Item Five, Public Hearings Discussion, Approval of Plats, RePlats, Vacating of Lots. First up is 5A, Commissioner Sandoval?
Thank you, Judge. The public hearing will be held on April 27, 2020, in the Commissioners Court, when it meets at 1:00 PM via zoom.com due to the COVID-19 restrictions. The public hearing is on closing, abandoning, and vacating a portion of East Ridge, an unimproved road in the Royal Oaks Estates Country Club Edition Unit One, a subdivision located in Lano County, Texas. As shown on the plat recorded in Volume One, page 70 of the plat records of Lano County, Texas, set 0.36 acres being more particularly by meat, described by meats and boughs. The public hearing has been advertised for three weeks prior to this meeting, and the publisher's affidavit is in the next portion.
So this is kind of a new, new area for us, with no-
Mike, can you check, right there, we, I know we've got three people here for this hearing. Or can you, Gary Don, just check and see if anybody's out there for public hearing?
I think who's out there, that-
Judge, some of them are logged in here, through the Zoom.
Jennifer called them.
Judge.
I said Jennifer had called, told them.
Judge, can you hear me? Judge?
Me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Some of them are logged in through the Zoom.
Okay. And is there anybody, I don't, I guess we're-
One of them is a Deborah Peters. And she's right here, and are you ready for me to unmute her?
It is, when the agenda item comes up, yes. Or maybe she wants to speak in a public hearing.
Jennifer, do you have someone?
Yes, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to unmute her.
Okay.
Bear with me just a moment.
Sure.
I don't see her.
That's what we're waiting on, was if someone had to comment on public hearing.
I don't see that. I don't see it on my screen.
Ms. Peters, if you'll start talking, you should log up for Jennifer to identify you.
Well, it will not let me unmute her. The system will not be unmute her. It shows that she's logged in, and she says she's dialed in, but it won't let me unmute her, so I don't know how she's logged in.
Judge, she needs to hit star six to unmute herself.
Ms. Peters, if you'll hit star six, you can unmute your phone.
I just did that, thank you. Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Excellent. So Mr. Sandoval helped me get all the documents together and submitted to the agenda. There were, I believe, 19 pages in the original submission, and then we got the publisher's affidavit the following day, came in as a separate submission, and-
Okay, hang on, hang on one second. Is she the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, then this is public hearing.
Well, I said she was probably wanting to speak on the action item.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Peters.
I'm, well, I wanted to make sure that everybody understood what we were requesting, and I wanted to ask if there were any questions from the Commissioners about this.
Okay, ma'am, at this time on the public hearing, we can't ask any questions. It would need to, we would close this, if there's no one else to comment. We've closed the public hearing, and move to Agenda Item 5B.
Item 5B is discussion and action on closing, abandoning, and vaca-, vacating a portion of East Ridge, an unimproved road being 0.36 acre tract of land out of the Pacific Abusta Monte Survey Number 401, Abstract Number 38, in Lano County, Texas. Further being a portion of East Ridge, an unimproved road in Royal Oaks Estates, County Club Edition Unit One, subdivision located in Lano County, Texas, as shown on the plat recorded in Volume One, page 70 of the plat records of Lano County, Texas. This is a, a road that appears on the plat, it was furnished with the documents, that was furnished to, in the document package for the Commissioners. It has never, ever been maintained by Lano County Road Bridge. Richard Wooton and David Lang and Mrs. Peters and myself met to review the area, and there's no, she's got all of the appropriate documents. She had the survey, she owns land on both sides of the road, and therein should be no reason why we couldn't approve it.
Now, Commissioner Sandoval, there, these documents here, this all of the property owners, all the way around it, that, that, at the, she does, at the end of the road is hers also?
No. If you look at the, at the map in here, she's got signatures from, from everybody who runs what's supposed to be East Ridge, but it's in the backyard, it's her backyard. And then, her land-
Referring to the document here.
She has signatures from the people who are on what, where East Ridge comes from. Those are backyard areas that the people who live on Skyview purchased. The Peters, Mr. and Mrs. Peters own a lot on Skyview, then these three lots on East Ridge, and then these five lots on the other side of East Ridge, so they're, they're probably as contiguous. If there is some reason they want, these people down here have a truck up here and go into their backyards, they're not prevented from, no, no, ma'am, there's, they're unaccessed, unaccessed through, but they have access from Skyview, but they have, they have access back here to go right here on this unimproved dirt road, and, and access their backyards. Up here, at the top of the hill, the, they only, the Peters on these two lots coming here, and no one here on these lots are prevented because they have access from Skyview, and the people on these lots here have access on this area of East Ridge, but it's not open, it's just trees, and there's not even a, I don't even think there's a gate there. So it's just a piece of land that got caught, and that's why I took Richard and David out there, and they said, no, we've never touched this thing, it's, we've never done it. Now, Ridgemont, which is back here behind it, goes, starts on River Oaks, and goes up to the Skyview at the top of the hill where Chesterfield starts, then it veers over 50, 70 feet, and it becomes Ridgemont, and it runs all the way north to Woodlawn, and we do maintain that portion of Ridgemont. But we've not maind-, maintained this lower portion of Ridgemont at all.
The only comment I have now is that there is no order posing the-
I sent the order to Marcy, so that, I thought she was coming. I may have a copy of the order here.
No, no, as long as you've got it, I just-
I sent it in last week.
Okay, okay.
Here, I've got a copy of it right here.
No, as long as she's got it, that's fine.
Well, but if we're all here, we can sign it. She's not here.
Okay.
So I have the order here.
Okay, perfect.
Can I, I have a question on, trying to understand access to these lots. I think in the document, lot number 33, possibly number 34, if you close that East Ridge undeveloped section of road, it would appear to me, based on the map, that at least lot 33 would be landlocked. It's a standalone lot on its own. And there's, there is, if you close that off, of course, you, you share the land, and it goes either side of the owners. How, but, but I think you said that Peters owned lot 23, and that property on there, I think that's in the document.
But they own, they own 22 and 23.
I'm looking at the map you showed.
It's in your deal.
Looking at yellow map.
Well, the yellow map could be the same.
The one he held up is the one I'm looking at.
Okay. Ms. Peters can comment on this. Lots 23 and 20, 22 and 34 has their residence driveway and a garage building and everything built in, it's an elaborate structure through there. Lot 23 doesn't have anything on it, but they have no intentions of ever selling this property, and, and the lots that they own on, on Ridgemont, if they decided they were going to vacate and sell, for whatever reason, any of these lots, it wouldn't preclude anyone from getting there on Ridgemont. As a matter of fact, there's people who are buying lots on Ridgemont and haven't built there yet.
How do you get there from Ridgemont?
Well, sir, I sent it in the packet, but I'll bring it over here to you.
I can't see where Ridgemont is.
Okay.
My question is, you cannot get to lot 33 from Ridgemont?
Their home is here, their garage is here.
Can only get to it, it seems, from-
They own all of these lots to here.
Which is going to close.
So the only portion of Ridgemont they want to close is what makes all of this contiguous to their property right here and here. These are backyards for the people that live here and here, and these lots here can come in off of Skyview, and if, if they wanted to make their own road here, they could. This is not our county road.
So some of these people that own these lots, they're signed here?
No. But we're not closing their road. There's, this is not a road. This is-
I, I understand. Richard, Richard told me that it wasn't, it wasn't developed, but in the future-
Well, if it is in the future, then this would be open for them to come down to here. They can't get any further down here than there, because they don't own the rest of it.
There's still access this to here, and all of this, and this one to this one.
Right, and they can come here, this one, this is not even, this is an undeveloped road here, too, but this is all paved up through here to right here and around the corner, and then Ridgemont comes up here, joins it, and goes back here, and comes up this way.
I see, I see what you're saying now.
Thank you, sir.
So Commissioner, just clarify this for me again. How do you, if you, if the Peters sold lot 33, how does somebody have access to that lot if we close that undeveloped East Ridge road, section of road?
The applicant and her husband have said, based on real time, they are not going to sell any of those lots. They want to close it off and maintain it, that's why they bought it. So she's on the phone, maybe you could hear her justify to that, or she was on the phone.
Yes, I'm still here.
And that's a good what? If anybody else that sells a portion of their property, you know, they have to give it easily.
Can you hear me? I can clarify what's going on with 33 and 34.
Well, I would like to make the motion that we approve the closing, abandoning, and vacating that portion of East Ridge, the unimproved road being 0.36 acre of land out of the Pacific Abusta Monte Survey 401, Abstract Number 38, in Lano County, Texas. Further being a portion of East Ridge, an unimproved road in Royal Oaks Estates, County Club Edition Unit One, subdivision located in Lano County, Texas, as shown on the plat recorded in Volume One, page 70 of the plat records of Lano County, Texas.
I would like to ask Ms. Peters a few questions. Needs to be seconded first. It doesn't have to be seconded before we do that.
The judge is in charge of getting her on the phone.
Is she still on?
Ms. Peters, are you still on?
I am still on, yes. Can you hear me? It doesn't look like you can hear me. Hang on a second.
Hang on, ma'am, hang on.
She's talking. I can see her mouth moving, but.
I can hear, can you not hear?
We're trying to work you up.
Now?
Try it now, Ms. Peters.
All right, how's that? No, doesn't look like you're hearing me?
No, ma'am, we can hear you. Commissioner Moss?
Okay.
I had my volume turned down. Can you hear all our discussions?
I'm sorry, can you say that again, please?
Could you hear everything we were talking about?
Yes, I did.
Well, some of our worries were how are people going to access these? On this paperwork that you have signing signatures and everything, is lot number 39? Or you own 39, I guess. But lot 35, 31, those people, have they signed off on this being closed? Because something that we need to think about in the future, that road may be developed or could be developed. And someone need to drive through there from, is that Skyview, over to Ridgemont? So have those people signed off on this road being abandoned, closed and abandoned?
Number one, we're not suggesting or requesting the closure of any property that is not bounded on both sides by our ownership.
That's not, that's not my question.
Understood. The owner of lots 30 and 31, owners plural, have signed, they've signed the waiver of claims. And they are on board, they have, they've signed that. The owner of lot 35 has not signed. He passed away about three weeks ago. But if he ever wanted to have access, he's got, we're not going to, we're not asking for closure of East Ridge from there up to Skyview. So you could always develop from Skyview down, moving south from 36 and 35 and develop that portion. And they would have access to all the other public roads. And we're not requesting closure. But the owners of lots 35 and 36 have not signed.
Matt, do you know, in our regulations, I believe that every property owner that is, that abuts the road has to sign off on it pretty much.
Do you remember, Linda?
I understand if any property owner is going to be affected, they need to sign off.
And that's my only, that's my only problem with this. Number 35 touches the road, touches the road.
These property owners that are, where the Peters are closing off their lots are not affected because Skyview comes right up to the top and they can come down here and it'd be just like any ranch road coming to a fence of another ranch that's open to their property. And there's no reason for them to continue on down. They have access in and out. And those are 50-foot right aways coming down through there if it were ever to be developed.
Your thinking and their thinking, our thinking and their thinking may be different one of these days. I mean, if they're supposed to sign off on it, they need to have.
But they posted the appropriate notices. They put signs up at that north end. They put signs down here at the south end. The pictures of the signs are in the packet. They have done everything that required of them for closing and abandoning in that portion of road that makes their property contiguous. Everything's in there, 19 or 20 pages of stuff, the deeds, everything.
What is your lot number concern here?
Number 35. Because 35 has one access, in and out, if we close this road.
Yeah.
Sir?
But they do have access.
They do have. And if they bought lot 34, which is also open, they would have Skyview access. 30, 30, the one that's up there at the very corner, 36, I don't know who owns that, but that triangle next to 36 was Jack Garrington's big building he built there at that corner. So he has Skyview access on two sides there, or that property knows. But he's not in the East Ridge period, so it wouldn't matter.
No, but Jerry Don's not talking about 31. He's talking about 35. But 35 does have East Ridge access.
It has one in and out. Of course, this road is not developed, I understand that. At some point, it may be, you know.
Well, yeah, it could be.
Well, it would never, it's not a county road. If they, if somebody wanted to come in there and buy 35 and pay to build their own road down there, they could. There is no roads there, folks. It's trees, cactus on both sides of that from.
Just making sure all the i's are dotted and t's across, Mr. Sandoval.
As far as this, this request goes, sir, I believe we have. I mean, we're there. If there's a document that's not there, I don't know what it would be. The couple in the survey is there.
My only issue is 33, which appears would be landlocked. However, it's owned by the applicant. The applicant knows it will be landlocked. If they decide they want to sell it, they got to either replat or figure out a way to make it marketable. And we do set a precedent in that any lot that is landlocked is acceptable to the commissioner's court if we agree to this. And I don't have a problem with it as long as the owners fully understand the implications.
Well, as was mentioned, if they decided, and we could get Ms. Peters's comments on it, if they decided to sell lot 32 or 33, because they have buildings already on the 34, their garage.
Right.
With their home and everything, that they would grant an easement up to there. But I can tell you, they didn't spend all this money to make this contiguous to sell it.
Well, it's, that's now, but this future, so.
Oh, that's.
But as I said, I don't have a problem with it as long as the owner has a full awareness of the implications.
Could we ask her to speak?
What are we going to ask her to speak about?
It's covered. Jerry Don, I think, or somebody had a question about her, about 33 or.
Everything she's known to cover.
It's existing.
And Mr. Sandoval, because that's what it is. They touched the easement. Everyone else has signed off on it. So why does everyone else matter and this one doesn't?
Because the road wasn't closed that affected their property. They can still get to their property by going up Skyview and turning down East Ridge.
Others can also. The owners to lot 30 and 31 have access too, but you got their signature.
I didn't get their signature.
Someone got their signature.
The applicant got their signature.
On these papers.
Think of it like this, like I just said, Commissioner. If that were Highway 152 and that was a non-county road there that had ranchland there and someone wanted to buy that and they came down there and there was a fence because the rest of that was owned by another ranch, they have nothing to say about that. We're closing off a road in the middle of property that's contiguous and private property should prevail here.
Commissioner Sandoval made a motion. We're in need of a second on this. There's no further questions.
Is Matt looking it up for us or what are we doing? Pardon me?
Okay.
I want to make sure we're not missing anything that Matt's.
Yeah, I know. That's my only concern is getting feedback from him.
It's happened in the past. We thought we had all the information and happened. I mean, in court, all of us.
And I agree that everyone that could potentially be affected needed to sign off.
Yeah, that's my only issue with closing.
Me too.
Well, let's just assume that if lot 33.
He didn't have an issue with it.
Well, Richard had no issue with it at all because he understands that being standing on the ground what's out there. And the Peters, if they never sell their property, there's not going to be a road go through there. We are not going to put a road through there for a nonexistent thing. If we leave anything over there as a county, it would be improved Ridgemont, which is an accepted county road. We seem to make all these processes quite difficult for the applicant, no matter where they are, even when they follow all these rules.
Well, the intent's not to make it difficult, it's to make sure that everyone is protected.
Well, it's common sense that those people on 36 and 35, 36 has two accesses, Skyview and East Ridge.
I agree with that.
And 35 has access to what is called East Ridge. And they can drive up there to Skyview. That's only the distance of that other lot. And the Peters on the other lots all the way up to Skyview. And I can't speak, but I thought I heard them say their intent is to fence all that because they've had trespassers to all of that. And we had a huge environmental case on lot 31 that.
I think we're probably getting into areas outside of the scope of this.
What I'm just saying, this is.
I said, I think we're getting into areas outside of the scope of this agenda.
It's wild area out there. That's what we're saying, I'm saying.
We're waiting on Matt. So there's, there's one owner? Is that what you're saying? For which lot?
There was a lot 35, the owner had passed away a couple of weeks ago, so they don't have a signature for it. Someone owns it, someone inherited his, their estate, his or her estate, whoever it is. So I know that things have been posted. I see all this information. But they're probably not worried about what's posted about a dang road when they have, you know, all this going on, so.
If they died a while back, maybe so. But what is the purpose of us going and putting any applicant through all of the notifications, the postings in the newspaper and the postings on the property? And is it our responsibility as a court to say, well, I'm sorry, you don't read the paper? I'm sorry you live in California and you don't come over here very much and so on and so forth?
I think it's, I think it's our responsibility to post to people next to them as far as the applicant, or to teach them to those lots.
Obviously, we see it a different way. Because it's, it's like a flag lot.
Okay, let me ask you this. Is it, is it in the regulations that signatures are required?
We approved that just here recently, how to go about closing, abandoning and vacating lots.
Okay, so it is required in the regulations that a signature is required, correct? All signatures. Are we in agreement on that?
That could be affected by the, by the closing and the vacating, sir.
There is a signature missing here. Does that, I don't see how that would require her to have to go through the whole process again, though.
No, as long as I.
Can we just, can we table this right now? Let her get the signature and then come right back?
We need to approve it pending that signature. We've done that before. We approve things. Pending a signature or letter or whatever. But before it's approved and signed off on and that road is, or that easement is closed and abandoned, we need a signature from the owner of that lot.
Ms. Peters, do you understand what we're saying?
To a degree. Does that mean I have to find all of the potential inheritors and contact them?
Can you turn yours up? So we don't have echo.
What did you say?
I'm sorry.
Turn your volume up. So we have echo on mine, too.
Okay.
Ms. Peters, can you hear us now?
Are we ready? I can, can you hear me?
Okay, do you understand what, what we're saying, ma'am?
To a degree. My question is, do I need to contact all of the potential inheritors and get letters from each and every one of them?
No, ma'am, there would be some, I would think there's, there's someone that's over the estate right now that could do it, that that's.
So just one person from the estate get their signature and that would be sufficient?
That, that would be what you work with your commissioner with to get.
I don't know. I'm going to tell them. Okay. Do you want me to tell that? No, I'm good. Mascots. Judge.
Ma'am?
We cannot hear Matt when he comments.
Okay.
We'll come here, I'll move. Okay, thank you. Ms. Peters, it's Matt Rinska. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
So you will need the signature of the executor of the estate for that particular lot. Unfortunately, probate can, you know, be commenced four years after the death of the individual. So it would, I guess, behoove you, if you want to move on this quickly, and I'm guessing you do, to reach out to someone in that heirship, some relative, and try to find out who they know or think will be the executor of the estate. So if the owner of that property, the decedent, only had a child, find out who that child is and contact her or him and see if they have commenced the probate matter.
That's if it's not a jointly owned property. If somebody else, if Jack and his wife owned the property and he passed away, then.
Right. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, you need to find out who it is. I mean, you know, like husband and wife, husband dies, typically the will leaves everything to the wife. She still has to go, she could go into court, get immunity of title, have all the property put in her name, and then she could give you permission to close the road. But it's, it's unfortunate, but land is unique and the court would be in a bad way if it gave you permission to close the road and then a subsequent heir shows up and says, hey, wait a minute, I, I don't agree with this. And then you're, you're in a deeper problem because you'll be fighting through a different, through different jurisdictions, court proceedings, all right? So.
As Commissioner Sandoval's made a motion, Commissioner Jones is second in the motion. From what I'm hearing, if, if he would amend his motion to get the signature, then, and Commissioner Jones was the second that amended motion, then we could move forward. then, and Commissioner Jones was the second that amended motion, then we could move forward.
All she would need, in my mind, and all you would need, and that letter come in or, or that, that signed paper from, from the heir or whoever that is on that property, that's all you need. And there's no, there's no new posting, there's no coming back to court or anything like that.
Do you understand that, Commissioner Jones, or Sandoval?
The applicant, if she's willing to do that. I don't know what choice the court has left.
No, you're not.
I said, I think we, as he said, it could be forty acres down the road. And we're not, we're not, the, the real key here is they're not deprived of going down there on that road. If there were utilities, they're going to have to get them from Skyview or they'll have to drill a well or to get water. There's water on Skyview and there's K-mud on Skyview, but there's... No. I, I would like you to ask Ms. Peters how she feels. If she wants me to amend it, I'll do it.
Affirmative on, on the camera. Give her a chance to talk. Ms. Peters?
Yes, sir. Um, well, if the only way to get this approved is to get a letter from the executor or one or more of the heirs, if that's the only way to get this done, I will do that. I agree with Mr. Sandoval that I would not like to have to wait four years to get this process through. Um, and I have to admit, I'm a little bit puzzled about the concerns when we have the fact that there are dead-end roads, but that's beside the point. Um, if, if what you need is a letter from the executor, I can't force you to pass this without that.
So Commissioner Sandoval, do you wish to amend your motion?
Yeah, I didn't hear, but if she's, if you think she said she's okay with that amendment based upon her getting the signature and, um...
She didn't say she was okay with it.
Pardon?
She didn't say she was okay with it.
She didn't say what?
She did not say that she was okay with it.
Oh, I didn't.
She said that she can't force us to push it through. But if it's the only way to get it through, then she's...
The other thing is, she might, we might as well just say she's gonna, you're gonna want the signature for thirty-six. Thirty-five, thirty-six for that whole northern end of that road. She got what she was supposed to do to close the part of the road she needed to close, the nonexistent road.
You know, if the statute, if anyone, whatever, addresses those property owners about the road or, uh, in close vicinity to the road. The late, this thirty-five is not about the road. It's separate from the section.
Yeah, thirty-six has access. From Skyview.
Thirty-six has access. Thirty-five would have access because we're not closing that section of East Ridge if it was a road. Um, but I'm not sure. It depends on how it reads, how, whatever regs we're dealing with reads in regards to... No. And I don't, where would they be, where would they be located, Snack, that kind of regulation?
You're in the transportation area and it's under five A, two fifty-one point zero five A, closing, abandoning, and vacating public road. And that's the general statute. Property owner may not enjoin the entry or enforcement of an order of a commissioner's court acting at the request of any person on its own initiative to close, abandon, and vacate a public road, a portion of a public road, unless the property owner is entitled to injunction because the person owns property that abuts the portion of the road being closed, abandoned, and vacated, or the portion of the road being closed, abandoned, and vacated provides the only ingress to or egress from the person's property. So it's kind of a backhanded process. Property owner may not enjoin the entry of an order of a commissioner's court acting at the request of another person or any person or on its own initiative, i.e., y'all doing it your own, to close, abandon, and vacate a public road or portion of a road, unless the property owner is entitled to an injunction because the person owns property that abuts a portion of the road being closed, abandoned, and vacated, or a portion of the road being closed, abandoned, and vacated provides the only ingress to or egress from the person's property. This is the court's order. It applies to all the property owners that abut that property. If they aren't brought on board through this process and Ms. Peters started to say that's fine, then any one of them at any time could file an injunction against the county because of the order. Because any person that owns property that abuts a portion of the road being closed has the right to an injunction against the county typically. You know, so a person who horseshoes that, you're not just coming along and saying, you know what, you should have closed that road there in Kingsland. I'm enjoining you. They don't have a reason.
But thirty-five, thirty-five is not abutting a portion of the closed road, sir.
Yes, too.
I'm not looking, I'm not looking at this. I don't know what map it is. I must not provide it this. I'll look at it, but I'm, I'm just telling you what the law is.
Well, my, my understanding of the word abut would be next to. And thirty-five is not next to a section of roads being closed.
That's exactly the way I heard it.
Is, is, am I understanding this correctly?
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Peter?
The word abut, I think is, my, my understanding would be it's next to...
But it is next to.
No, it's not.
No, not to the portion being closed.
Thirty-five is, is still next to and over.
Thirty-five is clear.
It's a road.
Here, Matt, look at this one. This might be a better...
If I may, let me go get here. It's the road.
Forty minutes, and, and I know if, if I'm getting frustrated, Ms. Peters is bound to be getting frustrated.
I can't hear it right.
Why don't we table this? Let's get a ruling on this. Let's bring it back to the court and do it in an efficient manner to where it doesn't take up everybody's time. Ms. Peters, I, I apologize for the inconvenience. What I would like to do is just table this if we could. Let's, let's figure out what needs to be done concerning this, these lots. We'll get you clarification and we'll get this on down the road if that's okay with you.
Judge, with all due respect, you just got a ruling from our lawyer that directs us everywhere we go. That's the man right there that tells us, and he just read it to us.
But you're asking him to make a decision on something he hasn't seen by his own statement. He hasn't had a chance to review.
Yeah.
Okay, the word abut means on an area of land or building, but next to or have a common boundary with. Next to or have a common boundary with.
It has a common boundary.
Yeah. It does not have a common boundary.
We need to move on, guys.
There's thirty-five and there's the road.
Table this. I, I, we'll put it on the next agenda.
Don't you see it right there?
And carry on.
No, it's not. Not thirty-five. Thirty-four.
You can go back and forth. I mean, there's obviously...
Off her vote.
I'll make a motion. We table it to the next agenda. We don't require her to re-adaptize or whatever.
And we've got a new motion to table the agenda.
I've already got a motion in a second. So they have to, you're talking with that before he makes another.
Okay, good point. Got a motion and a second. On the first motion, is there any, I hate to ask that, is there any more discussion?
They can rescind that. Take it away.
You want to rescind that one, Mike?
An all-in-favor, say aye.
Well...
The first motion is...
He can rescind that motion, Judge, if he wants to, right?
He had a chance to do that also.
I know.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to rescind the original motion.
Okay.
And we've got a second. My Commissioner.
Now, do you want me to repeat my motion to table?
Let's vote on it.
We got to take a vote on this one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ahs, and carries.
Okay.
Now, second motion, Commissioner Sandoval, or next motion.
I make a motion that we table it until the next commissioner's meeting and that we do not require the applicant to have to rerun public notices and for public hearing or postings on the road or whatever. And hopefully she might be able to retain the signature of Lot thirty-five or from the executor of the estate.
Got another...
Just so you know, that's a given. When you table something, they don't have to go through that process again.
I just, in this court, I just want to be sure.
We've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? Being an all-in-favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unopposed, Commissioner Moss opposes. Motion carries.
Are you against table?
That's what, that's what that means, yes, sir, when I voted no.
Okay, five D, public hearing, Commissioner Moss.
Yes, I see my variance.
Variance exception discussion.
Um, five C is a various, am I muted here? No, yes, no. Yes, five C, a variance exception discussion action. Request to approve a variance to accommodate replacement of a previous home destroyed by the October twenty-eighteen flood that was on ground level. This replacement will be elevated twelve to fourteen feet above the flood plain on Lot thirty-one A Bonning Cove subdivision. A subdivision in Lano County, Texas, is shown on the platte recorded in volume seven, pages twenty and twenty-one of the platte records of Lano County. The applicant and the, uh, Copeland, Copeland did the surveying and everything. They're here. The applicant may be on the phone. I don't know if he's here in person or not.
So this variance is to have a manufactured house to be put on that residency, is that...
Yeah, that's right. But that doesn't make any difference down there.
Okay, I'm just pointing out.
It's got manufactured homes behind it, next to it, around the corner from it. It's across the street. He's gonna, I sent in all the documents with the drawings and everything.
I've got it.
Okay, then I sent you a drawing that he's gonna go over the building setback line by some few feet in one corner. And CTEC, Central Texas Electric, had modified some of the, uh, with a, with a, uh, a release and, and on some of the setbacks on the sides. And they actually came out and moved the electric lines for him to accommodate this request. And, uh...
What do we have?
There you go. This here is a drawing from, from Captain.
Okay.
So it's a setback variance is what you're looking for?
Up here in this corner, up here in that very corner up there, he is, he's over the building setback line by six feet and he's over the utility easement by maybe a foot, in case he...
Yes, sir. Uh, he's over the building setbacks inside by, by a foot, almost a foot. And he's, uh, into the utility easement by about two feet.
So he's only one foot?
Well, six foot on one, and...
Oh, okay, I'm with you. I'm with you. I got it.
He's, he's sixty over this setback, but he's, uh, almost, he's eight ten with a foot in.
In the, um, in the packet that I supplied to the court. And if you'll look back at your packet, you'll see a more, uh, big, uh, huge, huge, that shows you that whole thing in your packet.
Show me that, show me that, Mike. What are you holding up? Yeah. I want to see what you're holding up.
Has this been built yet? And it's a manufactured home?
Yes, it's a variance request. The variance request doesn't request a setback variance.
No, that...
It only requests, uh, establish a manufactured home.
The variance exemption is to get approval.
What the request is?
The request said is place manufactured house on lot to establish residency in Kingsland. That was the variance request.
Okay. It had a residence setting there that the flood washed away. It was ground level.
So, but you're gonna change your variance, or the variance request is to get a setback variance approval permanently. Or, because normally what we might do on this is, if it was an existing property, is they have what we call plattens, which says this is ever removed and you cannot encroach in the future.
The problem is, Peter, it hasn't been built yet.
No, it hasn't been built yet, no.
So you can't do that.
So it would be a permanent variance request for a setback variance, not a manufactured home variance.
That's right.
So I don't think this has been submitted properly in the way...
You don't think what?
I don't think it's been submitted properly in regards to what the request is. I mean, understand the issue, would you?
The variance request should be clearly to, about the, the building setback lines. Agreed?
No, I agree.
Because the, the, the thing says various exemption discussion action request to approve a variance and to accommodate replacement of a previous home destroyed by the flood. That was on ground level. This one will be raised twelve to fourteen feet. In doing that, we had infringement to some of the CTEC electrical lines. CTEC modified some of the...
Where, where's that at?
That's not on our agenda.
There's a letter that's in the packet, Commissioner.
That's not on our agenda.
I'm reading the agenda. I read the agenda item. I'm just telling you.
So they're gonna put a manufactured home twelve to fourteen feet above ground level?
Right. It comes in two sections, a crane.
There's several of them like that over there.
Okay, okay.
There's not tons, but there's...
There may not be any in Horseshoe Bay, but they're over here.
Okay, well...
Okay, that, that's not the point. The point is where is the explanation for the request for the variance? You were saying it's in our packet, in our packet. Where is it in the packet?
Right there, in the statement of the, the agenda item. Their request to approve a variance to accommodate the replacement. And then there's...
Okay, but it's not on this request.
What request?
The request for variance.
The request for variance that was submitted.
Place, it says, request place a manufactured home on the lot to establish residency in Kingsland.
But it doesn't say that it, that it affects the setback.
Right. I mean, you have to request specifically what you're asking for, not what you think it might be.
Because I don't think that they need a variance request to replace a manufactured home above the flood plain.
But when he raised it, it goes over into the corner and he had to give...
But that's the point.
But here's the CTEC letters in here. Everybody's in here. Here's another case of where everybody's done everything, surveys, all the documents, the letter from CTEC and everything, and exploded because of the drawings and so on. And it gets to court and we're gonna hang a person up over technicalities. He said, he could have just put it up there in the air and not worried about anything down there and nobody would probably have caught him.
Okay, but the point is, there is a variance request and it's not specific to what the variance is needed, in my mind.
Right.
If we can't follow our own rules, you can't expect anyone else to. This was...
Mr. Spraggin, do you have anything to say to the court? Do you have anything to say to the court, Mr. Spraggin?
Mr. Spragons, do you have anything to say to the court? Do you have anything to say to the court, Mr. Spragons?
I looked at, well, manufactured home, all of the plate that had, it would be four, five thousand one that's, that's our name. Uh, that was that, that large. Other than, down from my wife has, we're in a private subdivision, and a private road that's maintained by our head showway. And they're, I'm at the end of the, end of the road, they're in the, in the subdivision, so there's not any traffic on that road, other than people who got in there that took the wrong street to get back out again.
Yes, sir, but, but, the, the concern is, and I don't think you heard us. The concern is, the, the request is to place a manufactured home, uh, above. And that's not what the request is for. You are in the set, but you are infringing on the setbacks. So that's what the request needed to be, was for us to approve the setback. Okay, so, so the request was not correct.
So that's reword the request?
That would be my suggestion, yes, sir.
I'll do whatever I need to do, just do whatever if I'm at home.
I, I understand, sir.
My suggestion would be to move it around in here where it's not in the building setback line.
They've done everything they can to try to get it to fit in there.
The house that was there, was it in the setbacks or outside of the setbacks?
It was a smaller home, on the ground, got ten foot of water.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it was more of a.
Well, we don't care what it had.
Excuse me, JC, when you wrote this, what was your intent?
I did not write this. I never, I've never seen the actual variance request until today. And so I.
Okay, well, we haven't seen it till today either, but it's not correct.
Well, we can either withdraw, or you can decide to table this, and then we can resubmit next meeting.
It can't be tabled, because that's the point of the problem. It's on our agenda. It's not right. It's not correct. So it would have to be removed, or need to be, in my mind, it needs to be removed, and then put back on it correct.
Was there a posting, a paper posting and public here to this? Not this? Okay. So it's not a problem to come back next meeting with a revision of the variance?
Exemption request form filled out to say, I want to go over the corner property line by eight inches in one place and a foot and a half.
Please state it as.
The correction is, you need to put it on the agenda how it's supposed to be, what they're asking.
Pardon?
The question is that you need to put it on the agenda what they're asking for, Mr. Sandoval, because if you put 5C on there, it is not.
I got it.
That's the problem.
Regardless of how to do it, I will make sure that the wording is correct, and make sure that you're okay with it, and make sure that you guys can look at it before we submit. Is that okay?
Right. And we'll submit the same drawings and everything else, and the surveys and all that, and the letters. Okay. So I'll make that motion that we remove it.
Second.
Remove it.
We've got a motion to remove 5C. And we've got a second. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries.
Is that right, Cindy?
The next one's scheduled meeting will be the second Monday.
The 11th.
We couldn't put that.
I think it was fourth time.
So we'll get it as quick as we can. Now we go to 5D.
So you can take those back.
Ready?
Ready.
5D.
Need to get something to hit me with, because 5D is a public hearing, being, uh, 1,261.415 acres of land out at the Elizabeth Bets Survey. Number two, abstract number 31, in Lano County, Texas. Indeed, to, to same of record and document number 19 dash 03350. Lano County Official Public Records does hereby subdivide six point, or 660.10 acres of land to be known as Vastreling Creek subdivision, and this is a public hearing.
So public hearing, Jennifer, I don't know if we got anyone who wishes to make comments at the public hearing?
Christie? Christie?
Yes, ma'am. I don't have any comment. Just wait until the discussion and action.
Not having, not having any public hearing? No one wants to comment on the public hearing?
Is is John Abels gonna be here?
Uh, no, ma'am. I, I, I told them I would call their office and have them on speakerphone, if that's okay with you, Judge.
Okay, sure. Okay, so we'll close public hearing, move to 5E, discussion action. Commissioner Moss, again.
They didn't answer. Uh, 5E, discussion action being, uh, 1,261.415 acres of land out of Elizabeth Bets Survey number two, abstract number 31, in Lano County, Texas. Indeed, to same of record. And document number 19 dash 03350, Lano County Official Public Records does hereby subdivide 660.10 acres, or .10 acres of land to be known as Vastreling Creek subdivision. Now, uh, let me see if I can get John on the phone. I do have the documents. Hey, John. I'm gonna put you on speaker. All right. Here are the. You're gonna have to. You're gonna have to speak up for me to hear you.
Before we go any further, I don't see any signatures on any of the documents, not your signature on them.
I, I fixed it to tell you about that.
Surveyor's signatures.
Yes, sir. I was fixing to tell you about that if you.
Go ahead.
The county surveyor did not sign it, because he never does when he is the surveyor that's hired. I did not sign it, because there's something missing. What is missing is, on this subdivision, uh, well, let me back up. Let me tell you what we do got first. Uh, Richard has approved, and we can get him by phone if we need to. He has approved the road situation. There, there is a plat note on there of how the road that we built to county standards. Everything's in order, except the LCRA letter. We normally have an LCRA letter approved on these things. Anything that's in the LCRA is the watershed. And this is, and we do not have one. And honestly, I would not have put this on the agenda if it, what, we weren't in the current situation. What, what do you have? This this would not be on the agenda if we weren't in this, uh, this wouldn't be on the agenda if we weren't in the current situation. Uh, Mr. Abels and, and everyone at Fred Thompson and Associates has been called, has been calling for two or three weeks to try to get a hold of the LCRA, and I can't think of his name. What is his name, John?
Eric Harris.
Eric Harris, the man that would, would approve or not on the letter, the LCRA letter, and has had no response from phone calls or emails. Uh, they are working from home also, uh, the LCRA, so we don't know if that's the situation or not. That's why my signature is not on the checklist, because everything hadn't been approved. Or, you know, we haven't got everything we needed. Now, I have talked to Christie. She's good with the, with the subdivision, and, and she's on, so I don't have to speak for her, except for that letter. We don't have that letter. So I went ahead and put this on the agenda just because of the current situation we're in. Normally, I wouldn't even have this on the agenda, because it's not complete. If we did approve this, uh, and I'll see how the court decides to go, if we did approve this, it would have to be depending on contingent to when, when that letter come in. Yeah, we, you know, we could approve it, and the judge wouldn't sign it until the letter come in, but that's, that's what it is. You can, Christie, did you hear him?
I didn't hear that.
Mr. Jones asked what the LCRA had to approve.
Okay, they would have to approve the plat note. Uh, there may be other requirements by the developer from LCRA, which would also have to be met by the developer. So I would say, uh, contingent on the plat note being approved by LCRA, and any other requirements set forth by LCRA.
What plat note are we talking about?
Let me grab it. It would be plat note 11.
11?
Yes.
What does that mean? Basis of bearings in state plan, plane coordinated system?
Hold on just one second.
No, it's plat note 11, Christie.
Is it 10?
Yes. Okay, they added one, and I'm looking at the old plat.
Okay.
This is the watershed.
Ordinance, so written notification and permits are required prior to commencement of any development activities. Okay, that's what we're looking for. Is there any reason to believe the LCRA will, when you mention that, not approve that? Christie?
That, that is unknown. Well, I've not heard from.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I said that, that is unknown. I have not heard from LCRA either. But if it's contingent on the approval, if they don't approve it, then the plat would not be approved. They would have to get their approval first.
I think you said something like, you don't think they'll, you think they will approve. I can't hear you. The phone is on the other side of the room.
Oh.
But.
If the, can you hear me now?
Very poorly. Go ahead.
Okay, I was just saying that if it is contingent on the approval by LCRA, if they do not sign off on the plat note, then the plat would not go through, it would not be approved. I mean, it would not go anywhere.
I didn't get that. Did you get that? What did she say?
Saying that if LCRA, if it's contingent on the letter from LCRA, and we do not receive it, or they do not approve it, then the plat will go.
Good, okay, fair enough. Thank you.
That's why I didn't sign the checklist, because I want to make sure everyone knew right up front that's we didn't have the information. Everything else is there. The, uh, the property owner has been in contact with, uh, I believe Christie and John, and John Abels and I, and that's where we're at. I believe Mr. Rinsler had something to.
May I? Um, I don't know if everybody on the phone can hear me, but has to be complete before the commissioner's court considers it. And under our previous discussion, the court has three things it can do. If it's a complete application, and it otherwise fits the requirements of the subdivision regulations or the law, it is approved. You really don't have any choice there whether or not you like the subdivision plan or whatever. The second option is a conditional approval. And conditional approval is, you approve it, subject to some items being tweaked. And you give the applicant, the developer, a letter that says it's conditionally approved, subject to these items that need to be fixed. And that applicant, that developer has the letter in hand, and off they go, and they can fix the issues. And once they fix the issues, and the commissioner's court is satisfied that those issues are fixed, then it is approved. So it's a conditional approval. And then there's the conditional disapproval, which is, uh, if the plat is disapproved, but there's reasons given, and the applicant or the developer can go off and try to fix those, but those conditions are typically so onus that they will never be able to fix it unless there is a change, say in federal law or state law, that now allows that development to go forward. And that is because, for instance, you could have somebody that applies to subdivide land to build some project that is just totally out of keeping with the county, but, yeah, federal law change, so that's my go-to part. Because this is so new, and as Commissioner Moss said, we are dealing with COVID-19 and the restrictions. I think we could go forward somewhat as a hybrid under the conditional approval scenario. Now, we have to draft something up, and I'll need to get some kind of acquiescence from Mr. Abels and his client that allows us to draw up something that's specific enough to this fact scenario that allows us the ability to keep them in the, in a very narrow lane of approval, and not to be going too far astray. And that's what my suggestion is.
When, when you say something drawn up, I'm not sure what that means.
Under the law, it says the, uh, 232.0026 approval procedure. A commissioner's court or designated conditionally approves or disapproves of a plat application under this subchapter shall provide the applicant a written statement of the conditions for the conditional approval, or the reasons for the disapproval, that clearly articulates each specific condition for the conditional approval or reason for disapproval.
So, so all you need is this, the contingent on that, because we need that letter from the.
And I, you know, I need to draw something up, have Christie draw something up that we issue out to the, to this developer that is specific enough to the issues that we see. And that's the law requirement. We're gonna basically dance around this issue. It is not. Right, I mean, yeah, we've gotta get this out. I mean, typically, it's under the new law, this application is, there's a loss so, but it should not have been before. We're dealing with COVID-19, so we've got some leeway there, but we still need to stay within the confines of the best we can. So that's my suggestion to the court. Yes, sir.
Any different than, we don't have a signed subdivision ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Why can't this be tabled until the LCRA letter gets here, and it shows back up on May 11th? Well, inside the, the base limit, so.
Commissioner, sandball that is, that is a policy question.
Oh, okay, sure. Okay.
So, privately, do we have a motion, or is there any further discussion?
I'll make a motion if you're ready, Doug.
We answer.
I'll make a motion that we approve the vast. I'll make a motion that we approve the Bastropin Creek subdivision contingency on the L C R A letter, watershed ordinance letter. Is that correct, Matt? Absolutely.
I would suggest if that's what the court wants to take up, it is move to approve item five E, move to conditionally approve item five E subject to the condition of a letter, a positive letter being received, an approval letter being received from L C R A and, and including any changes to the plat that the L C R A letter requires for its approval for the project to go forward. L C R A may have conditions itself, I can't read into their mind. But they may.
I hope you didn't expect me to remember all that.
If you want to skip to something like, write something out for you, if that's fair.
Yeah. That, that's fine, if it's all, it's a judge.
Good. Let's get it right.
No, we didn't, we didn't make.
He's writing something down so we can get it.
Just for the record, I would draw my previous list. Okay.
Six, discussion action prohibiting or restricting outdoor and burning in Land O' County. And I think.
We've had some rain and then we had some sunshine, so. But I still think we, do we have a report from anybody? Gilbert, Gilbert, you on the phone? Do you have a report?
Nothing.
I bet, I bet we're still good though right now. He's not on the, he's not on the.
No, I think he's, he's working on getting ready for tomorrow now for the testing.
In that case, I move we table.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? As have it, motion carries. Uh, just agenda item seven, discussion action to approve and update hotel occupancy tax rules and regulations and meeting dates. Commissioner Moss.
Um, I think you read it, but I'll go ahead again. Discuss the boss question to approve and update the hotel occupancy tax rules and regulations and meeting dates. Uh, y'all, the court had asked me, or maybe I volunteered, I don't remember, whatever, uh, a month or two ago to, um, go over these rules with the hotel occupancy tax lawyer. Um, that we, we have, uh, Justin Fragle, I believe. Um, and, and, and the treasurer, Teresa Castle. Uh, and we, we did, we'd meet and he sent these back with the corrections that, that all the notes I had from the court and, and any suggestions he had that, that we went over and are put in these rules and regulations. Uh, if you, if you've read these, there's several places in here, including the very first paragraph that it references to where we basically fund things that help the unincorporated areas or unincorporated lodging facilities or areas of the county. Um, doesn't have to be that an event, maybe in a city or wherever, as long as it benefits the unincorporated areas of the county, the unincorporated lodging facilities in the county. Uh, I, I think that everyone felt like everyone wanted that in there. Uh, and it's in, that's in here quite a few times when it talks about unincorporated lodging facilities uh, in the county. Uh, we did take out, he, he changed some things from the old wording since this, this had been in there a lot. The, the, uh, some of the, the certain distance from Land O' County had to be. And we took out some of that. I think, I think there's one still that references a, a distance, but we took out some of that because it, it doesn't really matter where people are from, as long as they come here and stay in a lodging facility in the unincorporated areas of the county. Uh, so we left, left some of that in there, but we took most of it out and, and, uh, I, I don't know of any of the other actually changes other than cleaning them up and making, making these rules a little bit, a little modern, I guess. And we did change, uh, uh, where did it say it in here? About the date, the commissioner's court date will be about one meeting a year. It would be, uh, the first meeting in November. Uh, the treasurer had asked that the applicants uh, present their applicant, uh, their application to her at no later than forty-five days before that meeting, whatever that meeting may be. Uh, it'd be the first regular commissioner's court meeting, November of every year. We, he cleaned up the, uh, cleaned up a little bit on the, the application, cleaned up the, uh, follow-up report, some of those things and, uh, I, I wished I could go through here and tell you exactly word for word what, what was said, what was asked by the court, but the lawyer put them in, went through these things and with a fine tooth comb and we did it first and then he, he did in his office and sent them back to us. And this is what he recommended. In the account for hot hotel occupancy tax is the amount we would allocate on the once a year hot hotel occupancy grant application or grant approval. So, uh, we just have one meeting, one amount, and then.
That's what we're going to be able to establish.
Figure out the priorities through the year. So, so those who are submitting a grant request will have to really make sure they're on top of their game. The problem is going to be, we, we are going to be our own problem. Because if, if an event or a person, if we, if we approve these like that, if an event or a person doesn't get there in time, we're going to have to stand by our own rules or, you know, that, that's going to be the problem.
Be sure that we get the information out to those folks that have requested money in the past that.
And Teresa had said, Teresa, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Transition to this, because if we're going, we're going to look at hotel occupancy tax today, in October, we're not going to have an annual amount that we would allocate. I mean, what, what is it, three hundred thousand a year or two hundred fifty thousand a year?
Because I guarantee you this year it's not going to.
Yeah, it's going to change, it's going to be low. I'm, no, I'm sorry, what did you say again?
I said, the money's going to be very different this October, I think, than hopefully next year because we are not having the hotel occupancy tax money coming in.
No, but apart from that, what I'm saying is that by October first of this year, whatever is accumulated from whatever time forward, today forward, because if we're going to allocate funds already there, we may only have a hundred thousand dollars in that account for the full year next year.
But they will have already been funded for this year, though.
Right, I mean, yeah, I understand. But the following year, you may have two hundred and fifty thousand in the account. Remember, we talked about that when, whenever, uh, and that, that's one reason I was against this in our meeting that we had in commissioner's court because by Mr. Jones saying, in a sense, we're going to spend money we don't have in the bank yet because we're going to spend money this November for all next year. Uh, Aqua Boom, crawfish, leaf, all these things that we fund or don't fund, whatever we do, uh, if we, whichever website, direction we go, whatever we do, all these things are going to be funded November. And, and we won't, you know, we won't really know how much money, we're going to have to be very concerned. It doesn't say that in here, it says how much money you have October thirty-first will be then what you would allocate to next year's allocation. Yes, sir, but since this year's going to, the first year is going to have to be different. Right. Well, next year it would be like that.
Ms. Lang has a good point, it has to be encumbered because we've got encumbered funds today that we have to look at.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, uh, like I said, that was in here because, um, I believe most of the court requested, I don't remember honestly. I think most of the court felt like that was the thing to do was go to one or two million a year. Uh, the first year is going to be tough, we're going to have to really pay attention and, and, and guesstimate how much. Well, it doesn't say that, it doesn't say about guesstimating, it says what's there, October thirty-first is what you have to allocate. In that case, we won't allocate any, already, because we're not going to have. Yeah, so if you want Aqua Boom and, and. Which that's not necessary to, because that whole summer going on. There may be not enough money in October to be able to allocate that for the full year. So what we would have to do, we would have to, is we would have to, whatever we spend the, the next year, everyone may have to get cutted, that's something. After their, their number they normally get would be reduced. The transition is difficult, I think. Falling year, you may have more. Yeah, I mean, the transition is difficult.
It is difficult.
Yes.
I agree.
Right.
Funds as of October.
So.
That would be anything that's unencumbered, something that you haven't already obligated to somebody else.
Could I also make a suggestion?
I don't have a big problem with it, but I'm sure some of these events and so on, we don't have a problem. And our funds are, I know, I know crawfish, for example, crawfish didn't spend very much. They spend a little bit, even though it was postponed to a later date, crawfish hasn't spent all theirs and probably won't. Uh, and some of these other events, we not either, you know, we have Aqua Boom coming up, but I really hope and pray that we can have an Aqua Boom in July fourth weekend, but, but who knows? You know, so there may be, it's going to be tough the first year, just like you said. Well, unless, I mean, you can't have, you can't have an estimate on one hand and an actual on the other. You've got, if we're setting this up as an approach, unless we have some kind of a transition approach for the first year in some fashion, I don't know how you do it.
Well, in a lot of the situations, I mean, I don't know how you do that.
No.
Dad.
The only, the only way to do it, as I said, you can't spend money, don't have, you, you, you reduce everything the next year. Unless you have more than one meeting, let's say you have two meetings in a year so that you knew in April what you have.
We've been talking about this a long time.
I know. Right.
Dad, may I say something? Hello?
No, I agree, I totally agree, I mean, the idea is good, getting there is difficult.
Pay in on this, Teresa Castle?
Yes, may I say something? Uh, if we, if we wait until the second meeting in November, we will have the quarterly reports from the hotels and lodgings. Otherwise, we're not going to have much money because the most of our money comes in at the quarter, which is the end of September. So by the end of October, we should have that, but we may not have it all for the first meeting. Would we want to wait till the second?
Now, with this being up, does that hurt anyone's? I've got my volume up now, does that, does that hurt? We can't hardly hear.
Did y'all hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Can you start over, please?
Yes, I wanted to make the suggestion that possibly we wait till the second meeting in November. That way we'll have all the revenue from the summer because the quarter will end at the end of September and they have until the end of October to pay. So you might have more money to give out if we wait because some people, of course, are going to be late.
That, that is, at, at the second meeting would at least be a full week.
Correct.
I mean, I'm sorry, the first meeting in November would, at the very least, would be a full week before we had the meeting. Because it's the second month.
If you're good with, because we have late people all the time and just going to be realistic with you, but if you're fine with that, I'm good with it. That was it.
That was it.
What is your recommendation?
Do you think we should wait to the second meeting?
Only if you want to have more revenue because people are always late and that way we would have it all in. Because, you know, I really have to send over my stuff to Jennifer at the very, very first of November.
I got to tell everyone that Ms. Castle and I, and we were all in agreement on this when I put it on the agenda. So that, this changing to the second meeting, I didn't see it till it was on our agenda. But we were in agreement when we met with Justin, that's why it is like it is on the agenda.
That's fine, but y'all seem concerned about money.
Absolutely. So I, I mean, it, the second meeting is fine with me, it doesn't make any difference. But, uh, that day happens to be my birthday, as a matter of fact. But, uh, it, it doesn't matter, uh, the first or second meeting, but I'm just explaining why I have it on the first meeting is because we were in agreement when we were.
Well, and I, I think it's important to point out that this, this has been in the process long before COVID-19 hit. And, and COVID-19 has created some whole new challenges that, that no one saw coming. And, and part of, and it, and it's going to have a definite impact on the hotel occupancy tax. So we.
The, the thing that worries me, Judge, about it being the second meeting is that's a holiday, that's around the holiday, Thanksgiving holiday, and it seems like there's always someone gone.
So if we had to, though, we could have a special called meeting for it, could we not?
Yeah, then, then we'd have to have it every year, I mean, if you don't set it, you know, we'd have to have a special call meeting every year. But once we get to a yearly meeting, then it's in a cycle, but getting there. Because the, the meeting is always going, the, the quarter is always going to end in October. Right. So it's still always going to be. Well, no, as you're talking into September, I think. I'm sorry, September, but they have till October to pay.
In January, we get a lot of money. So why wouldn't we have a meeting in January of the yearly meeting? Because that would give us that last quarter and we'd have more money because if we go into the meeting with only a little purse and then in January, the end of that quarter, there's more meaning in the pot, how are you going to distribute that after, say, in, in October or November, this is all you get?
After the first year, the only problem, only time we're ever going to have a problem is the first year. After the first year, that January is going to be included in that November budget for the creep issue, which the first year is the only time we're going to have any issue. Which is going, and it doesn't matter if you have it in January, October, wherever you have it, whenever you have it, you're going to have some transition period, some issue.
I was only thinking about, it wouldn't really affect any event if it were in January. No, there's nothing in November and December, as I recall, for funding. Pardon?
Probably there will be revenue in January, February, most of it's before October.
Prior.
Was that after the flood or?
Those points were brought up before, that's why it was November.
Well, that's, that's reasonable to be expected, obviously, no one was hoping. And I think it's going to be low because of the COVID as well, all of the stuff that's going on.
I think it doesn't matter when we do it, the first year is going to be awkward, there's going to be some transition struggles and we just have to all acknowledge that and, and work, work through it as best we can.
Is October thirty-first the magic date or why are we doing October thirty-first? Teresa was saying to do a coordinate and it, and, and like they said, every, the judge, as soon as you said, I mean, from November through the, there's nearly done to fund it, November, December, January, and February. I don't believe it, maybe it starts in February and March. So there's nothing but then. And funding, yeah, there's no. So the end of, the end of quarter, so in September, then we look at, tie in a month to be able to get the accounts balanced. And then in November, allocate whatever we have, that's the deal. Teresa, are you still there? Teresa, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
I, I didn't, I believe you requested November, didn't you?
Correct. Mainly because what you said, you know, we don't have much going on in, uh, November and December and, yeah. And we'll have our money, it's just that we've always done it at the second, so that was just a suggestion. But first is fine with me. at the second, so that was just a suggestion, but first is fine with me. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
First meeting in November.
Sure, that'll be fine.
But, I mean, like I said, the second one, I don't have, it doesn't matter to me either one, I just, sometimes there's, there's people gone around the holidays.
So on, on the motion to approve and update the, the hot tax rules and regulations and meeting dates, when would it go into effect?
I, I didn't, I can't hear you.
The effective date?
Uh, if we approve it, it's, no, back to, tomorrow, since we got a hot meeting today.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
And tomorrow might look better.
Well, it would be, the first meeting would be November 9th.
Just a play by.
May 1.
I mean, May 1.
Definitely not today.
No.
Not right now. Have some unhappy people here in a minute.
So Jerry Don, your, your motion to approve and update the hot tax rules and regulations and meeting dates effective May 1st?
Yes, sir.
Is that a motion? Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. We move back up.
Do we need to vote on the meeting date?
I'm sorry?
Do we need to vote on the meeting date?
I think it was in the motion. The first commissioner's court meeting in November.
Yeah. So now we move back up to 5E, just, Commissioner Moss?
All right. Because it's COVID-19, I move and then read 5E, because it's in here. Okay.
Okay.
Or you want me to read this? Yes, uh, here, get here, and Matt's got a, Matt has a motion written down and, and I'm not very good at his handwriting. So this is, uh, the motion that I've suggested to Commissioner Moss, and unless he tells me it's not what he wants, then this is what will be before the court. This motion is made due to COVID-19. I move to conditionally approve item 5E being 12, 1,061.415 acres of land out of the Elizabeth Bets survey number two, abstract number 31, in Lano County, Texas, indeed to same of record and document number 19 dash 03350, Lano County Official Public Records, thus hereby subdivide 660.10 acres of land to be known as Vastreling Creek subdivision, conditioned on the commissioner's court or its designee receiving the required L-C-R-A letter and any and all plat changes required by L-C-R-A, being so noted on the final plat and the appropriate local official signatures on any applications necessary for completion, I didn't put that there, but. I so move.
Did you say 1,061 acres or 1,261 acres?
I thought I read it's being 1,261.415 acres.
I'll second that. Jerry Don, this is Marcie, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, can you make sure I get that written thing from Matt for the minutes?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second, I don't know if everybody heard, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. This time we'll move into executive closed session to receive legal advice regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offers or other legal advice pursuant to 551.071, 1 and 2 of the Texas Government Code, including but not limited to the following items, Lano School lands, solar farm lease, Holly versus Lano County, Hutchins versus Lano County, and Marshall versus Lano County. Legal advice regarding the Texas Local Government Code, the Open Meetings Act, the Public Information Act, Lano Jail Employment and Personal Personnel Law, Utility Law, Lano Local Health Authority, Lano School Lands Procurement and Contract Law, evidentiary and procedural law, road and bridge law, ethics law, and general government law, legal advice regarding any item on this open meetings agenda. And we'll go into executive session at 3:00 PM.
Okay, Judge, you will fix it while I get back on when y'all are through, correct?
Yes, ma'am, we'll, we'll get Jennifer to buzz you, I think, I hope.
I'm doing it right now, Judge, you got your recorder that, that Marcie brought over, it's in a red bag.
The, the people that are on here.
Everybody will be dropped off here.
Hey, what?
Everybody is being put in a, everybody is being put in a waiting room, they will not be able to hear anything that's going on. Um, I'm going to mute you and all I need you to do is wait, wait, where's, where's everybody, did they get out?
What are you talking about?
Like Linda and everybody.
And, nah, I don't know.
It says, please wait, the meeting has to let you in soon. Is that what yours says?
But I didn't put them in the, in the.
No, mine still shows me on here.
Yeah, I didn't put, oh, here.
You're showing all.
Hang on, hang on, it got a little carried away, bear with me.
There's Linda back.
Yeah.
And Mr. Sandival, it, it shows that he's not on here.
Hang on just a sec. I was going faster than the computer was, I apologize.
Uh, it also says live on Facebook.
Oh, yeah, um, I will take it off of, in the Facebook, go back on and record.